Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the Malden School Committee meeting to order. The time is 6:08 PM. We apologize for the tardiness and start in the meeting, and we're going to blame that on the City Council, who met here last in the chamber. So, as we always do, we let you know when our next meeting will take place, and that will be on Monday, April 7th, at 6:00 PM. As we always do as well, we'll pledge allegiance to our flag. We'll take a brief moment in honor of those who continue to fight for our country and who have served us in the past. We'll then have our clerk take attendance to ensure that we have a quorum sufficient to allow us to come together tonight, and then we will get into this evening's agenda, which consists of approving the minutes from February 3rd. We'll have public comment. We'll hear from our superintendent. We then have an update on where things stand with negotiations. We have two motions and resolutions. One is around our attendance policy, and then the other one is around the proposed school assignment policy. Then from there, we'll entertain personal privilege, and then after that, we'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for three reasons. The first is to approve our executive session minutes of February 3rd, 2025. The second item is to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically our Assistant Superintendent/ Director of Student Services. And then item three is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation with the Malden Education Association units A, B, and C. Then from there, we'll come back out and we'll move adjournment. So are there any questions of the team? If not, let's first pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of all those who have fought for our country and continue to do so today. Thank you. Will you also please remain standing for a moment of silence, at which I will now turn it over to our vice chair, Jennifer Spatafor.
Thank you. So I ask that we have a moment of silence for educator that we lost in Malden last week. Ms. Donna Quill was an educator at the BB school for quite a while. Before that, I believe, Lyndon. She worked in the Pace classroom, so anybody that works with special needs kids has a heart of gold, and it's truly a loss for this district. So I ask if we just take a moment of silence to honor her.
Thank you. All right, now let us take attendance.
Mayor Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Drummy?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Spatafora?
Here.
Ms. Macklin?
Here.
Ms. Hoardy?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Ms. Rose Eiberg?
Here.
Superintendent Sipple?
Here.
Student Representative Catherine Fontanilla?
So we have a quorum sufficient to allow us to come together. Let's get into this evening's agenda, of which we have "breaking news," in quotes, and you'll see why I said that in a minute. On Sunday, we received an email from the New England Scholastic Press Association, and the title of the email was "Malden High School Senior Named One of New England's Top High School Journalists." Now, when we-- When we saw that subject matter, as you probably can imagine, we were just all so proud, that typically, when we receive these kinds of emails, we'll do a presentation the following month, or the month after that, or maybe we'll send it to subcommittee. But not with Mac Keating. We are just so blown away by what was said in the email that we immediately moved within 24 hours to have Mac here tonight, so we could all say how proud we are of this accomplishment. It says, "Malden High School senior Mac Keating is among the top high school journalists in New England, the New England Scholastic Press Association announced on Sunday." NESP, for short, named Keating to its first-ever all-New England high school journalism staff, which recognizes the top high school journalists working on newspapers, yearbooks, broadcasts, or literary magazines throughout the six New England states. NESP named only 17 total high school journalists throughout New England, and Mac Keating was one of them. On behalf of our entire school committee, city, we honor Mac Keating. All right, we'd like to have Mac come up. Now, Mac, we were in such a rush to make this happen, that the one thing we forgot was the citation. So we will work on that after tonight's meeting and make sure that we get it to you. But for now, we are just so impressed with what you have accomplished, that we wanted to give you a moment to say a few words. So let me turn the podium on. You're up.
Okay, well, there's a reason I do writing and not speaking. But I started doing journalism through my class my freshman year. I had signed up for it during COVID, because I wanted to have a class with people I knew in it. So I knew two people from my middle school were signing up for it, and I was like, "I know how to write. I'll take this class." And, not to be cliche, the class kind of changed my life, mostly because it made me realize how good of a writer I am. But, no, I've gone to meet so many people, just from interviewing people, like people that I wouldn't have talked to before, or necessarily topics I wouldn't have researched before. And even if I don't pursue journalism after high school, it's a skill I'm going to have with me for the rest of my life. So this program has been the best thing that's happened to me throughout high school.
Great. We were going to ask, what is next for you?
I'm going to University of Vermont after this year.
Okay.
I will be majoring in classics and then minoring in ASL on a pre-law track.
Great. And we presume you're covering the State of the City address tomorrow morning, and if so, we're hoping this presentation time will make you go easy on us.
So I did open with saying I'm a writer and not a speaker, so I think you can handle that.
All right, very good, very good. Okay. Did you want anything? Let me go to our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, Mac, congratulations again. I had the pleasure of being in the hot seat and interviewed by the editor-in-chief of the Blue and Gold a couple of months ago, and I shared the article that you wrote about all of the work that we're doing trying to improve the schedule at Malden High. And others, who work with other districts around the state, were like, just so impressed by the nuanced and well-researched article that you wrote to really honor the work and also the intent behind the work, and also a lot of the emotions that students and teachers alike feel, and the apprehensions that people have, and the hopes that they have to. And so, for me, it was just a small example of what you bring to the table, and so when I saw the email this morning congratulating you for this honor, it didn't surprise me at all. You're a tremendously gifted reporter and writer, and you've got a great future, even if journalism isn't what you make your bread and butter with long-term. So congratulations again.
All right, so we're going to do a quick picture with Mac, if that's okay with everyone. School Committee won't be in brief recess.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
All right, we're back. Now, let's see if we can talk that. I don't think so. But we'll try. Regular session minutes of February 3rd, 2025. Motion by Mr. Drummy, second by Ms. Spatafor. Everybody's had a chance to review them. Any questions, queries, quams? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. That carries unanimously. We're now at public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the school committee. We only ask that you state your name and address for the record, and public comment will be open. Three minutes per speaker, and we're going to set it for 15 minutes. Hopefully, we won't need that, right, everyone? All right. Public comment is now open. Let's do this. Good evening.
Hi, everybody. So my name is Penny Calman. I live at 194 Bainbridge Street in Malden. I'm a proud veteran educator of 26 years at the Salemwood School. So tonight, I'm here tonight to really lean in and think about the statement "do right by all children," because to me, it feels more like sometimes we are doing right by some children and some families. Why is it that the sixth-grade math, science, and ELA teachers at the Salemwood School teach five classes a day, an additional wind block that tailors interventions to our students' needs, to 115 students every day? But just down the road, the ELA math and science teachers teach less than that. They only teach 64 students a day. To the best of my knowledge, they also teach an additional wind block. But why can other schools have a cap of 100, when Salemwood School receives new students daily, and sometimes even transfers from other Malden schools? The math teacher usually teaches seven classes a day on Monday and Tuesday, Wednesday. How? Because she teaches her five math classes, recess duty, wind block for differentiated instruction, and then has a classroom of students to close the gap after school on those three days. Yes, she's an amazing woman and an amazing teacher, but yes, this is also killing her and the rest of the team, as well as the seventh and eighth grade teachers upstairs in my school. We all want to do right by all, but we feel Central Office, the Welcome Center, and this school committee make it impossible for us to do that. How can we possibly do right by all students with nearly double the number of students and half the amount of time? We are expected to reach out to 115 families, while teachers at another school are expected to only reach out to 64 families. We spend many of our preps in parent meetings for our 504s, our 13 IEPs, our 20 Level 1 and 2 ESL students, our 25 students who are either ESL 3 or ESL monitoring, behavior issues, family check-ins, mandated district training, planning field trips in nature's classroom. We actually really have time during prep to do our prep. Why does one school have a daily prep as well, an additional block set aside, without students, to complete the activities I just described? When a guest scientist from Mass BioEd came into Ms. Lindquist's science classes last week, she was shocked at the incredible differences of schedules, timing, and number of students at each of our K-8s in the same city. I say, shame on Central Office, shame on school committee, shame on the directors and administrators, and even my union siblings, for knowing about this completely unfair and unequal distribution of students and time. Then, we had--
We're at three minutes, okay? No, if you want to just wrap up, you can, but we're at the time.
Then, you come to Salemwood School and lecture the staff about reaching out to families about attendance. Of course, when one school has double the students, it will take more time to reach out to families. Of course, when one school has double the students, it will take more time to meet with families. Of course, when one school has double the students, it will take more time to coordinate schedules with these families. And of course, when one team of teachers has double the students, they will burn out and get sick more frequently. My team received--
Closing up?
--three new students just last week.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, public comment remains open. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Sarah Strayer. I live at 43 Havelock Street in Malden.
Great.
And for my three minutes, my coworker and friend Penny Calman would like to finish what she has to say, if that works for the school committee.
Hold on, let me check the rules. Do that. No objections, Ms. Spatafor? No objections? Please.
Thank you. So last week, we received three new students in the sixth grade. We are not only teaching content five times a day, 45-minute rotations, to 115 students. We are trying to nurture these students. We are trying to teach them etiquette, teach them English, make it engaging. We are told to be off the computer. We are told to be on the computer. We are told to follow the same pacing guide as my colleagues, who have many fewer students. We also find time for Model UN, and in the grade six, to write the Mac's courage essays. How are some teachers only held accountable for 64 students with the same expectations as those of us with 100 or more students? Which students receive more small group instruction? Which students receive more feedback? Which students have a better shot at one-on-one time with a teacher? Which students get more attention, one of 115 or one of 64? Which students and families are we really doing right by in 2025?
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the school committee can do so now. Let us check online, see if there's anybody online.
So if you'd like to participate in public comments on Zoom, please use the raise hand function.
All right, we're going to wrap public comment, and now go to our superintendent for his report, Dr. Sipple.
Well, good evening. We've had some, a couple of technical challenges tonight, but it's really good to be with all of you again, and hopefully these-- There we go. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of the committee, and members of the public, and our staff who are here. I want to thank you for this opportunity to share a report for this month. Tonight, we're going to be, we already had our special recognition, so we'll check. We're going to, going to be sharing with you preliminary entry findings. These are findings from all of the listening sessions and the classroom observations, and from the last nine months now, since I took office, and so I'm really excited to share that with you. And then, we'll also be presenting to you a proposed school district calendar for next year at the end of the presentation, and inviting you, hopefully, to adopt that, so at least we have a tentative calendar in place for next school year. So, I've had the pleasure of sharing these findings, these preliminary findings, with parents and caregivers at two different events, including one just on last Tuesday evening. What, this is centered, along with all of our work, around our core values of including and collaborating, leading in such a way that people feel included in decisions that impact them, and that we're making the best efforts to collaborate across roles, across schools, to make sure that we're doing the best by all kids. We're embracing growth, making sure that we're holding out the conviction that none of us are done. We're all on a journey. We're all growing, and we can all be better with feedback, with coaching, with effort. We can all be better, and our schools can be better as well. And the commitment to do right by all kids, which I've heard echoed in many places over the last several weeks, which is really about making sure that whether students have someone to advocate for them or not, regardless of where they come from, regardless of what language they speak, that we're committed to do right by all of them. As you are aware, and as I've shared with you in previous meetings, I've been doing a lot of work over the last nine months to really get to know Malden, to get to know the schools, to get to know the community, and to understand the needs of the district from as many different angles as possible. A lot of that has been listening to stakeholders, nine town hall meetings with parents and caregivers, sessions with educators across all of our schools, surveys, and more than 50 meetings with community members over the course of the year. I've had the pleasure of visiting schools at least 40 times, and being in over 400 classrooms so far. Still have some that we're going to make sure, that I had not been in, and we're going to make sure that we get to all of them before the end of the year. And then many school events, and just another lovely event on Friday night at the ELC, which is so, so awesome, and other opportunities to meet with parents and see staff and our students in action. We've looked at a lot of data. We've looked at attendance data, achievement data, graduation and dropout rates, English learners' progress, enrollment, and also measures of school culture and climate, and really looking at all of those things to get another reference point on how our schools are doing and what our district's needs are. And then lastly, really engaging with administrators across the district, engaging with you all as a committee, and with subcommittees, and engaging with our labor partners, both SEIU and Malden Education Association, to really collaborate and to build shared understanding of what our district's needs are. And there are four big strengths that I've seen again and again and again, and four strengths that I perceived to be in place when I applied for this position, and I've only become more convinced that these strengths are real, and they're deep, and they're just such a blessing for all of us to celebrate. First and foremost, of course, are diverse and talented students. This particular photograph, you can barely see it, but these were the finalists from the Poetry Out Loud competition, who performed, and I was privileged to serve as a judge for, just last, the end of January. And you can see there were students from everywhere who were a part of that competition, and including, I believe, our student representative was one of those finalists. We have engaged parents and caregivers. All of the town hall meetings were well-attended. People, and even on those meetings that had lower numbers of attendance, the parents were very engaged and very forceful in their advocacy for what their children need and what their schools need. Committed educators and leaders, been struck even since before I started the position, just how, well, first of all, how welcoming educators have been, how welcoming leaders have been, but then also how ready they were to have meaningful conversations about what the district needs and what students need as well. And then lastly, a tremendously supportive city and community. We've got a tremendous partnership with the city of Malden, but then also with entities throughout our nonprofit community and other educational organizations, just that really, really set a tremendous foundation to do right by all kids. So, there are six areas for collective action that have also emerged, and in a recurring way, have been really evident throughout all of the listening sessions and across the months. These are six areas in which I really perceive they frame the work that we as a district need to do, both in the short term and the long term, to make sure that we are the strongest district that we can be. First is affirming high expectations for all. I'll go through these quickly here, and then I'll talk a little bit more in more detail about each one. Adapting instruction to meet diverse needs, ensuring fair access to opportunities, partnering with families, nurturing a strong workforce, and then building strength and stability. High expectations for all. As you all know, as we've had conversations since last June, when I first arrived, it's extremely important that we have the, we provide the opportunity for every student to have the broadest set of options they can possibly have when they finish high school. Whether they choose to go to college, that's their decision. That's their business at the end of the day, but if they choose not to, it cannot be, because we did not prepare them to have that opportunity, and prepare them to thrive once they took that opportunity. And every student, regardless of what their prior educational experience might be, or whether they have someone who's a forceful advocate for their learning or not, we need to make sure that every student has that opportunity. And so, we, the adults, the leaders of the organization, have to lift up those expectations for every student, and that's what this speaks to here. In this image that you see here, it's from our professional learning day that we had in November, and we had the opportunity to hear from many students and who were very grateful for the education they're receiving in our schools, in this particular instance, Malden High School, but they also wanted to make sure that our teachers knew that they had a lot to offer as well. This particular young lady, if you can read what it says on the screen there, she says, "I speak three languages. Do you?" Meaning, she is a young lady who's at beginning stages of learning English, but she already speaks two other languages before she started learning English, and she speaks them well. And just to make sure that teachers have an idea that every child is much more than what they appear to be on the surface, that there's a depth, that there's an intellectual ability, there's talent, there's desire that is under the surface. ability, there's a, there's talent, there's desire that is under the surface that we have to be present to and mindful of, and make sure that we're, have a, a program and a set of, of arrangements and classes and interventions and opportunities that really gives every single student the opportunity to thrive. Which leads, leads me to the next one, and that is meeting diverse needs. We have the most diverse school district in the Commonwealth, which is awesome, which is another thing that drew me to Malden. It's a strength that I mentioned before. And that also presents a challenge in that we need to make sure that we are using our instructional methods and ways that are really meeting the needs of that diverse population. Three populations, if you will, three categories of students, and these overlap, are students with disabilities, students who are learning English, and then students who are advanced learners, students who, when they walk in the door or halfway through the year, they're already ready for more, they're ready for more challenge. And I've heard from parents across the district that, of all three of these groups, and again, some, in some cases, there are students who are an advanced learner who's also learning English, and there's a student with a disability who's also an advanced learner, but that we have to do right by them by making sure we're meeting them in the diversities that they have. And making sure that our educators have the training and the support and the coaching to do right by them as well. Which leads me to the next one, which is about fair access for all. We heard during public comment, something that I heard at many schools across the district, which was a concern that educators have, that there's a perception at least of varied resources from one school to another. The, the speakers tonight are just an example, but I've, I've heard that from many educators across the district. I also have heard from parents, as you have as well, concern about different exploratory offerings at different K-8 schools, and even at Malden High School, making sure that all students have fair access to the opportunities in, in the building regardless of their, of their, of their, their student's background. So that's another area, making sure that all of our students have fair access to the programs that we provide and that those opportunities are accessible across our schools as well. Another area for, for action is partnering with families. Since the first day I walked in the district also, I've heard from parents concerns about communication, wanting to make sure that they're getting reliable information on a, in a, in a consistent and accessible way, in their language, from the district, from the school, from their child's teacher, and that's, that's been a focus, as you know, of a lot of the work we've done initially over the course of this year, making improvements in that area, but it's still something that needs to be, there's a long way to go, and we are going to be working hard on effective communication. And it also translates into making sure that families have easy access to district services, and they also have the opportunity to collaborate in a meaningful way with our schools and with the district as well. Nurturing a strong workforce. Our educators are our most valuable resource, and we have to invest in them with competitive compensation to make sure that we retain the best staff that we can, and we attract new staff, that we provide them effective training and support, that we're recruiting for staff in an innovative way, and also that we create and nurture a collaborative culture so that people, those educators feel like they belong, that they feel like they have input into, into the shaping of our programs. I also will just say that from early on during my, my listening sessions with staff, something that came up again and again was concern that we are not, we have too many unfilled positions, and that too often, we're posting positions too late and losing out on candidates when they're looking for their, when they're looking for a job. We have been taking that to heart and making some adjustments to practices under the leadership of Assistant Superintendent Sarah McLaughlin, and I want to invite Dr. McLaughlin to come up just for a moment to share some highlights of some work that's happening with recruitment and building our team for next year.
Thank you. I'd be happy to. Good evening, Mayor Christensen and school committee members. I appreciate the opportunity to share briefly just a couple of things that we are doing in my office as well as across the leadership team. I, as the superintendent said, this work of making sure we are filling every position is mission critical in terms of running an effective school system. So here are in order of the five that are listed up there. We are doing a huge push this week on an early postings of our positions for next year. So this means that we will have approximately 50 postings going up later this week on School Spring, which is the website we use for postings. These are retirements that we know about, these are vacancies that we've had this year that we anticipate wanting to fill for next year. They're also our highest needs, so there's a fair number of ESL teachers, a fair number of special ed teachers, we want to fill these positions. The best candidates are out there now, they're not waiting for the summer to look for jobs, so that is why we're doing a huge push at this time. There'll be more jobs posted later in the spring, but our initial group is going out this week. We are working to effectively communicate that we have these positions. The, our careers page on our website has been updated to include school descriptions, to include reasons you should teach in Malden, and a link to those job descriptions. So if you're on our website and you click careers, it doesn't take you right away to the postings, it tells you a little bit about why Malden, and then you can see all of our postings. We're also working on our communication with people who apply, because we know that if people don't hear in a few days, they're going to move on, they're going to look in other districts where they get a quick response, so we're absolutely tightening up our communication back and forth with applicants. Third thing, we need to go where people are looking for jobs. I spent Saturday at a job fair at Brookline High School sponsored by the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education, and as I looked around at the other tables, and Revere was there and Medford and all the, all our close friends, friends along the way, we're the one district I heard that has actual positions to hire for right now, so I think that makes us even more competitive. I will be at Bridgewater State later this spring to talk to their grads, as well as continuing to build relationships with our schools of education. Fourth thing we are doing is launching this hiring process with an approach of a centralized initial support. So we'll do the heavy lifting for principals at the beginning, screening people, finding out who's most recommended for these positions, and then move really highly qualified candidates out to the schools for their visits and their interviews. Takes a little bit of work off of school leaders at this stage. And then we have been working closely with a recruitment consultant who's advising us on strategies, helping us to hone our message, and she is helping us identify potential candidates for our hardest to fill positions. So she's prioritized kind of 10 positions that we absolutely know we need some help and support with, giving even a wider recruitment range. Do you have any questions? I'm happy to talk more. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. We will have an opportunity for questions in just a moment. The last, the last area for collective action is strength and stability. As you recall from last month when I, we talked about the budget projections, the, the numbers from chapter 70, from one year to the next, tend to go up and down, and the long-term prospects for funding from the federal government are very uncertain, I would say, right now. We need to have a long-term sustainable plan for the financing of our schools, as well as our facilities, as well as making sure that we can maintain and keep the, our technology up to date for the use of our students and our educators as well, and be open to the possibilities longer term, the transportation might be able to provide ways that we could give students access to opportunities that may not be available at their home school by getting them to somewhere else in the district where those opportunities are available. So strength and stability is really just making sure that we're managing our resources well now, but also being as creative as possible, working with the city, working with our state delegation, working with our philanthropic community to make, to really establish resources that will help us weather the, the ups and downs of state funding over the, over the longer term. So opportunities for engagement, as I mentioned, we had two feedback sessions with parents and caregivers just recently. There will be lots of opportunities for engagement with educators. I had the pleasure of spending an hour today with the entire staff at Malden High School, talking about the schedule at Malden High School and, and that work that continues. But there will be a, a feedback session available for parents and caregivers that will be on Zoom, it'll be a webinar, on Tuesday, March 25th, from 6:00 to 7:30. I know there was some disappointment by some in February that they were not able to participate in one of those in-person sessions, and so we're going to be getting that word out to far and wide in the community to make sure that everyone has that opportunity to, to give feedback at that session. And then we'll be working with each of these areas, and I'll be looking forward to working with you all, to begin to launch a strategic planning process later in the spring, where we'll be able to dig into each of those six areas and really begin to, to plan out what our, both short-term and longer-term actions are going to be to support our achievement as a district in all six of those areas. And with that, I will yield it to you, Mr. Chair, before we look at the calendar.
Please. Questions of our superintendent? Any questions based on what you heard? You've had the presentation for a little bit, so there may not be any immediate questions. Start with Ms. Batafora.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Superintendent, for this presentation. And I know we've spoken offline, but I just want to note that I would love to see more information on special education in your presentations. I know we talk about reviewing data in the data section, we talk about English language learners or English learning progress, we don't talk about special education. So I, I just would like to see more of that, if you could. And then when it comes to our hiring right now, and if Ms. McLaughlin could come back up for a moment. I don't know if you have these numbers off the top of your head, but approximately 50 postings for 2026 are being opened?
For 25, 26.
Twenty-five, twenty-six. So I, I'm just curious how we do that when we don't have like a formal budget yet to know what our budget expectations are going to be.
Great question. So it is a combination of retirements in June that we know of at this date, so a known vacancy, some licensure issues with people that have an emergency license, and that position needs to be posted because if the person doesn't get a license, we would need to fill that, and then current vacancies in this school year that we've been unable to fill are becoming part of next year's vacancies.
So no new positions per se, that everything is...
With the budget.
Yes. Okay. And so my second question was going to be in regards to emergency licensures and stuff like that. I know at this point in the game, we've usually had some conversations up here about what do those numbers look like at this moment? How many educators have we reached out to to say, hey, you know, we're in March now, what's going on? Of course, we want to work with you, what can we do to, to help because we want to retain you? But do we have any formal numbers on how many?
I can get them to you. We have them, and the, as you may know, Desi is not doing any more emergency license extensions, so even if someone has gotten one, once or twice, this is the end of it. So people are being notified this week that, you know, we know they are running out of an emergency license, and if they have any questions about how to renew or how to apply for a new license, they can contact myself or to Desi.
And our H, so our HR is reaching out to those educators saying, okay.
And we've had conversations with principals, principals have had conversations with educators...
This is not new to anybody.
This is not new.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Batafora.
Could I just, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add that there are some, what, what Dr. McLaughlin said was completely accurate, that the, the positions that we're, we're posting are positions that we have to have, they are, and we're, we know that they're going to be vacant based on all the information that Dr. McLaughlin described. There is a, a small number of English as a Second Language positions also that we, based on our projections at this point, we are confident that are well within our budget for, for next year that we're also posting.
Can I respond?
Please.
Thank you. So, and, and that was, I, my thought process was also if we have retirees, a lot of them might be at the higher end of our step-in column, so budgetary projections would be those salaries would be coming in probably lower, giving us some wiggle room within the budget. Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Batafora, seeing no other lights. I would just like to ask Ms. Merz to step forward. I'm probably going to ask a question I already know the answer to, but Ms. Batafora reminded me, I presume all this movement is being done in concert with what we're doing on our end. In other words, does Mr. Hogan on the city side know of the attempt to fill all these vacancies?
Mr. Hogan and I brief on a weekly basis, so he's totally in the loop with everything that we're doing.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, everyone, let's move on to the school district calendar for 2025, 2026. How do you want to introduce this, Superintendent?
Well, just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We were starting to hear inquiries through our principals from some of our educators saying, hey, is the calendar coming out soon? Because they're wanting to make their vacation plans for the summer, or just wondering when classes are going to be starting in August, and parents also beginning to inquire. We, as Ms. Batafora may have, may share with the committee in her update on negotiations, we have several proposals, both from Malden Education Association and proposals that we made that may affect the final school calendar in terms of professional development days and, and a variety of other things. But what we've done here in consultation with MEA is provide a calendar that just kind of assumes that the status quo from our current contract will be moving forward, and so that is what you have as, for your review here, and what you can see on the screen now if you're viewing from home, and that is that our educators would report back for their first day on Monday, August 25th, and the first day of school for grades one through 12 would be Wednesday, August 27th. The first day for kindergarten would be the 4th of September, and we would have all of the holidays as outlined for each of the months of the year, with the last day of school being Friday, the 12th of June, assuming there's no snow days, and the graduation ceremony for Malden High School being Sunday, June 7th. So again, this is subject to change. We do have proposals that we've made already with regards to early release, professional development, and to the day before Thanksgiving that could change this calendar if we get agreement with the union on those, on those items, but at this point, that's, that may not come for several months, and so we wanted to at least get a tentative calendar on the books so that people could begin planning, because the first day of school, the first day for staff to report back, those are likely to be consistent no matter what. consistent no matter what happens with those other items. So that, if it pleases the committee and please, and Mr. Mayor, if it's possible to adopt the calendar tonight, that would be wonderful.
Okay. What say you? Let's go to Ms. Hoody first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question, and I was just double-checking because I realized that we did not have this this past year because of the way that the winter holidays fell. Our last day of school this year was, or sorry, our last day in 2024 was December 20th. And this has us going up right up until the 23rd. I have a question that you may not have the answer to, but I'm wondering about, I'm wondering about attendance on the 23rd when it's a full day versus a half day. And I'm wondering if either one of those things make an actual, like attendance, if we're going, like, I, I don't know if this has been brought up by the MEA, but I'm questioning just that one day. Everything else looks great, by the way.
Thank you, Ms. Hoody. Well, one thing I can share, and this was data that we were able to share with the MEA during negotiations last week, is that our attendance rates for early release days tend to be much lower than our attendance rates for full days. And so on those dates, one reason why we've proposed to not have the early release professional learning next year is be mindful of that, that dynamic, in addition to concerns about time on learning and, and other, other matters. But at this point, so, so that's why that, we, we did minimize the number of days. The only date that's required in the contract to be an early release day is the day before Thanksgiving.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Batafor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, well, I understand that this is tentative, based on our negotiations. I just have a question in regards to potential early releases, Ben, because the time change now goes from what we currently have as an 11:00 AM dismissal to a 12:45 dismissal on here. How does that affect school lunches? Because I know now, 11:00 AM, we do not serve school lunch. So with the assumption if we did keep professional development days in with a 12:45 dismissal, would we be serving, I, I mean, I shouldn't say would we, legally we have to. But how does that affect the school lunches and the scheduling to make sure everybody's getting a lunch before they walk out of the door?
I don't know. Ms. Merz, do you want to comment on that? You are correct that they would, they will be, basically, you either, you either have to have an early, early dismissal to avoid having to serve lunch, or you have to wait until lunches have been served. And so that's the reason for the 12:45 dismissal time. We are thinking of ways to make those meaningful professional learning days, even if the students don't leave until 12:45, and we don't, aren't able to pivot on that whole scenario. But, but I'll let Ms. Merz speak to the scheduling of lunches and logistics of lunches because that's definitely her specialty.
Yeah. So if we will have dismissal at 12:45, we will be serving lunch for all your K8s and at the high school.
What is the latest lunch period in our schools?
So they fluctuate because some schools have four and five lunches, so some lunches do start around 12:30. So we'll just have to push some things a little bit back to make sure that every child is fed.
Could we think about potentially doing like grabbing goes?
Not allowed. Unfortunately, that's not allowed through Desi, so you have to have it in the cafeteria or in your classrooms. And you need to eat, you can't have a grab and go on the way out the door.
That's a shame.
The schedules are typically adjusted anyway, though, so that you wouldn't have the regular lunch schedule that you would have on a regular 2:15 dismissal. It would be, it'd be earlier in the day.
Okay. I'm just going to say on a personal note, looking at this, I did shed a tear because I realized when I looked at that little graduation cap, my own child's going to be there. And I can't believe how quickly 2026 is upon us, but I think barring any changes in negotiations, I'd like to make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Batafor, seconded by Ms. Hoody. Any remaining questions, queries, qualms, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it, that carries unanimously. Thank you, Superintendent. Now down to subcommittee reports and discussions. Let's hear from Ms. Batafor on where we are with negotiations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I keep on taking my glasses off, glasses on. Happens when you get old. So, the negotiation subcommittee did meet with the Malden Education Association on February 27th for our first, I'm going to call it our first official bargaining session. We did meet one time before that, more or less to establish our ground rules, set our schedules. But this was really the first meeting where we, the district as well as the union presented proposals to each other. As the superintendent mentioned, a few of our, all of our proposals are on our website, on the Malden Public Schools website. They can be found, if you go to maldenps.org, go to, oh, shoot, I believe it's our, what's, what's above the school committee though? It's like under a drop box.
About.
About. Thank you. And then go to school committee and then negotiations. And you can find all our proposals there. One proposal that the superintendent did talk about is we have proposed eliminating professional development days. Not that we don't want our educators to obviously have professional development days or development, but the early release days. Thank you. And that would help us on our, our time on learning and ensuring our students are getting the necessary time in schools, as well as proposing that we make the day before Thanksgiving a full day off, not a half day. And that is also attendance, you know, we see a lot of students not coming to school that day. So, of course, we are very student-centered in all of our proposals, making sure that every request is at the behest of making sure our students are getting everything they, they require, they need. So, the next meeting, the next few meetings are actually scheduled for March 10th at 5:30 PM here in council chambers, March 26th at 5:30 PM, again, here in council chambers, and April 10th at 3:30 PM. And we are trying to accommodate both sides and timing to make sure that for educators, they don't have to leave the district and then come back. So some are, meetings are at 3:30, and then some of us on the school committee do have day jobs, so a later start time helps us. So, otherwise, we're just getting things going.
All right. Any questions of the chair? Hearing none. Let's go to motions. Oh, Ms. Hoody?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question regarding the professional development days. So, we have half-days included in here. Would the move be then to have one or two full professional development days, or would the district no longer provide, be providing professional development to staff during the school day, during the week? And it would be 100% on them to do it individually?
We do have professional development days built in before school starts at the beginning of the year.
Right.
And then the superintendent can, because I believe there's...
Yes, through the chair. So we have, in, we have, the educators work 184 days. They have a, the first day back is, there's a, a staff welcoming event, but then they spend the rest of the time in their buildings, setting up their classrooms. But then we have one professional development day, that's second day they're back. We have another one on election day. And then this year, the third day would be, will be in January, the Monday before Martin Luther King Day. So those would be the three days that will, that we have planned for a full-day professional development day. But we don't have additional days besides those three PD days. The, the professional learning that we would hope to achieve is through another one of our proposals, which is embedding collaboration time and professional learning within their, within the day to the greatest degree possible. So as a part of their regular workday, they'll have opportunities to work and collaborate with teachers who teach the same grade level or teachers who teach the same content in administratively-guided formats. And so that, and that would be built into the regular workday as opposed to something that we'd be doing at the end of the day with sending students home early.
Okay.
Also? Again, there'll be upcoming meetings to discuss further.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Batafor. Now let's go to motions and resolutions, everyone. First up, attendance policy. Ms. Batafor, let's stay with her.
So, we have an attendance policy, and what I'm, I'm focusing on in, within the attendance policy is specifically our unexcused absence policy. And I'd like to make a motion to send it to some committee. I don't have anything formal here for us. But the reason why I'd like for us to look at it is, it reads that three unexcused absences per quarter will be allowed. Four or more unexcused absences in a quarter will require the teacher to give a student a 59 for that quarter. 59 is a failing grade. A lower grade can be given if the student's actual average is lower than a 59. And then students can use the attendance appeals process. That's where our policy ends. There is really no discussion about what this attendance appeals process is. It does, I guess the K through eight does have a, a policy, a procedure, not a policy, a procedure. The high school has a procedure, but it's kind of unknown. I think in reading the, the handbook, it says, "Contact school principal for more information." And then I think also just the number of absences I would like reviewed because if you have four or more unexcused absences, you get a failing, but then you can possibly do this attendance appeals process. I'm hoping we can look at, like, I mean, if a student has 20 absences, are, are they even allowed to make up, like, I think we should just have some formalization around this policy even more. So I'm just making a motion to send it down into policy to be looked at and worked at, worked on with our Assistant Superintendent of Student Services as well as, you know, possibly the school principals, just to make sure we are doing right by students.
Okay. Motion's been made by Ms. Batafor, seconded by Mr. Drummy. Everybody clear? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it, that carries unanimously. Now, over to Ms. Rose Zieberg. Proposed school assignment policy for referral.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is also a motion to send a proposed assignment to schools, to also send that to Policy and Procedure Subcommittee. It's an updated way, and, and just so that it'll be really clear, this came through the superintendent, that we've been speaking to it, and, and this is his work, you all have the copy. And to look at it, talk about it, to sort of standardize, and so that everybody will know what the assignment process is. It needed some updating, so here's the way to get it going, is to send it to us. So a motion to send the proposal for assignment to schools to Policy and Procedures.
Motion made, seconded by Ms. Hoody. Any other questions about that, everyone? Let's go to Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question actually about this second motion. So through you to Ms. Zieberg. So like the school assignment policy, is it like actually what pertains to being like a passing grade or homework? I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. So what, what exactly is this about? I'm not clear.
This is about, I believe, where a student attends school. You might be referring to the policy proposal.
Wait, we're on two, right?
Yes.
So it's a school assignment policy?
Yeah, where someone is assigned to go to school.
Oh, okay. I thought, I was, I was, I thought it was like, like school assignment.
Oh, yeah.
Meaning...
No.
No.
Okay.
Just where they...
Well, that's what I, that's what I was getting at.
No, where they attend.
If they actually come to school?
No. Where they are assigned to go.
Oh, so like what school they're going to?
Exactly. Yeah.
All right.
Right, Ms. Rose Zieberg? Yeah.
Okay. It's live.
Okay, very good. Anybody else? Ms. Batafor.
Thank you. Just a quick question, because I know we're in the middle of like kindergarten registration, and so are you looking for action from the subcommittee sooner than later? Or, not to put this on, Ms. Rose Zieberg.
No.
Or, I wasn't sure if this was something that we're looking at down the road? Or, like, let's meet now because, yeah, we have kids enrolling and, okay. Just want a clarification to know what to expect.
Just to say, we will be, the subcommittee, we will be getting, I'll be getting your availability later this week. It's me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who here is opposed? The ayes carry it unanimously. All right, everyone. We're now at personal privilege, left to right. Start with Mr. Drummy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ferryway School PTO and SSC is having their meeting tomorrow night at 6:30. It'll be on Google Meet. If you go to the Ferryway School PTO website, it'll have the links hooked up for you. Early release Wednesday, everyone knows about that. And then on Thursday, there's Title I Bingo. I don't know if you're going to be calling it, Mr. Chairman. It's been a while, I understand that. That'll be at 6:00 PM in the cafeteria at Ferryway. On the 10th, the Harlem Wizards are coming to visit the Ferryway. I, I was talking with Principal Stoll, he seems to think they're playing high school?
Oh.
Teachers? Steve? Somebody said yes.
Play next month.
Oh, next month?
It's August.
Uh, uh, April or August?
April.
April, oh, well, well, in that case, Principal Stoll's in trouble because he gave me that information.
Mr. Drummy, could you get that info to all the members?
I will do that, yes, I will. I'll follow up on that. On the 11th, right next door here, there is a fundraiser at the Santa Fe Barrio from between 3:00 and 8:00 PM. So if you go there and you want to eat, just tell them, you know, here for the Ferryway School, and they give them a percentage for their, for the PTO. On the 13th, there is paint night. For those of you that want to take out your creative differences, it's a $20 fee. You do have to register ahead of time. It does include a slice of pizza and a drink, I was told. Again, if you go into the Ferryway School PTO website, it shows the link and it downloads the, the form that you have to fill out because you have to give your, student's name, teacher, class, and all that. So that is on the 13th. And on the 20, from the 24th to the 28th is the book fair. Again, the Ferryway School is also looking for help in that. If you want to sign up, you have to be corey-checked. On any school function, you need to be corey-checked. So if you want to do and help out, again, going on the Ferryway School PTO website, it has the link to go on to fill out for the corey-check. And I think I've just about covered it, except everybody, happy thing, ah, yeah, happy Thanksgiving. Happy St. Patrick's Day. This is a problem with the Irish. We have this block. And, Mr. Mayor, I'll be at tomorrow's meeting, and you really have to go really far at the state of the city to beat last year's coming out of a coffin. I'm just going to say that. So pressures on you, my friend.
Always. What else is new?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, very good. Did you have anything, Mr. Gray?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have one item. This year, Malden Porch Fest will be taking place on Saturday, May 17. This year, Malden Porch Fest will be taking place on Saturday, May thirty-first, and I'd like to inform everyone that I will be hosting. We'll have two incredible acts. We're going to have the King-Serpent Variety Troop Pirates. There'll be sea chanties, dancing, singing, and comedy. It looks like it's going to be a great time. It'll be at two ninety-five, rare Lebanon Street, Malden, Mass. Act number two will be the MAP Family Learning Center. Some of Malden's finest K through eight children will be performing, and it's going to be a great time. If you want to come and see some of our brilliant Malden children from the MAP Family Learning Center, they'll be performing on pianos, guitars, and they'll be showcasing their skills. These are K to eight kids, you better show some enjoyment. Okay? We want to encourage the talented young people of our city of Malden. That's all. Come on, May thirty-first, Porch Fest, my place.
Thank you. All right, over to Mr. Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if I can beat that. No, I can't beat that, anyway. So this Wednesday, March fifth, of course, early dismissal, no lunch served. On the week from March tenth to the fourteenth is the Salem Wood Book Fair. On March twelfth, the school council will be meeting over Zoom at five P M. On the March eighteenth, caregiver-teacher conferences from three-thirty to five. This is going to be the last conference of this year. So if you want to go in here where your kids are doing, make sure that you guys show up. There'll be a CPAC meeting on March eighteenth at the Five Eight Cafe from six to seven-thirty P M. The next day, Wednesday, the nineteenth, there'll be a F T O meeting from sixty-eight in the Five Eight Cafe. And then on the twenty-fifth, there'll be the Title One Bingo Family Night at six P M. You might be doing a lot of bingo.
It's the only thing I'm good at, I'm told. All right, thank you, Mr. Bernard. Over to Ms. Hordy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for Forestale, speaking of bingo, Title One Bingo is going to be on Tuesday, March eleventh, from six to seven-thirty. Come down and have some pizza, play bingo, and win some books. The next P T O meeting is Wednesday, March twelfth, at six P M. on Google Meet. Check out the Forestale P T O Facebook page for the meeting link. The book fair is coming, starting March seventeenth to the twenty-first. The Scholastic Book Fair will be in the library. And the biggest fundraising event of the year is Rock the Walk, which has recently begun. Now, until March twenty-eighth, students and families are invited to participate in the biggest fundraiser of the year. The event will culminate on Friday, April fourth. Please pay attention for more details. And a slight sidestep, this Saturday, March eighth, Senator Ed Markey will be having a town hall meeting right over here at our Malden High. Senator Jason Lewis will also be joining him. The doors open at one o'clock, but it begins at two. I highly recommend you attending that. I believe it's also virtual. I don't know if it's virtual.
It is.
Immediately?
Yeah.
If there's a delay? Okay. So good way to get the ear of your elected officials if interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Batafor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick blurb I'm going to read to you. As you may or may not, excuse me, may or may not know, the option for public bodies in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to hold public meetings remotely or hybrid is set to expire March thirty-first. We've had overwhelming success. I mean, we have twenty-two people online right now watching this meeting. So with that being said, I am advocating strongly for anybody that is, wants to participate in public governance, to contact your state legislators. For Malden, that is Senator Jason Lewis, Representative Paul Donato, Representative Stephen Altrino, and Representative Kate Lipper-Garavedian, thank you, to advocate for this provision to become permanent. I know it has been extremely helpful for, you know, people with families. I cook dinner many times while I'm watching city council meetings, so my little soapbox. Bebe announcements. We have Tuesday, tomorrow, Title One Bingo at six P M. Wednesday is early release. Thursday, who laughing at me, Bonnie?
At me. She's laughing at me.
Thursday is Culture Day. Friday, the Vocabulary Parade will be happening at nine A M. Sunday, two A M., don't forget to turn your clocks when they spring forward. Spirit Week starts on Monday, the seventeenth. Tuesday, March eighteenth, is the Grade Three Music Show at one-thirty. The theme is the power of music. Caregiver Conferences, Wednesday, March nineteenth, starting at three-thirty. And Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, School Site Council Meeting, five P M. And then on March twelfth, the Transition Fair at Medford High School in collaboration with Malden. And lastly, somebody has a birthday. And it's last June graduation, he made us wear hats.
Yes.
So I would be remiss if I didn't bring a balloon to say happy birthday to the chair.
Thank you.
I won't say when it is, but I just know it's within twenty-four hours or so. So happy birthday, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Thank you. I think. All right. To what Ms. Batafor said, we have met with our legislative delegation about remote access, and we have signed a letter with all the Metro Mayors to do the same. So Ms. Batafor really summarized it perfectly. Of all the policies and laws out there, this one, we believe, has been most beneficial for our community, and fingers crossed that they will continue it. I can't see any reason why they wouldn't, but you never know in this crazy world we live in. But I feel like our city has really made the pitch to continue it. Ms. Rose Seiberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do not have a birthday balloon to give you, but I also do not have any bingo news, so consider that a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Okay. For the Linden, it is Read Across America is this whole month. They will be having author visits. A local author, Claire Diane Cream, will be coming tomorrow. Book Character Day is Wednesday. You can dress like a book character. The kindergarten has their annual event, Fairy Tale Players, who are going to be there on March thirteenth. It's an in-house field trip. The Harlem Wizards, as we heard about, will be there on March tenth to do a show. Teacher Conferences, March nineteenth, three-thirty to five. P T O is having a virtual meeting on Thursday at seven o'clock, which will be via Google Meet, and that is to plan the multicultural night, which is scheduled for April eleventh, so keep that one in your thoughts. For eighth grade, they're doing some fundraising for their activities, so they're hosting a paint night on April fourth. Get in touch with the main office for info on that for both of these. They're also doing yearbook shout-outs, they put together a yearbook every year. So that went out to eighth-grade families, but if other people are interested, you can contact the main office. During Ramadan, there are students who observe, who go to the library instead of going into lunch, so they could use a little bit of help with those kids, to also get in touch with the main office. Congratulations to the Model U N. who raised thirteen hundred dollars to pay for buses and registrations to go to events. They did carnation sales, a volleyball event, and a movie night. Well done to be able to raise that kind of money. They did not have the information yet for me. They did host a Read-Athon in all of February, and it was neck and neck, and the results were coming out later today. So I don't know, at press time, I didn't have the info. March tenth through fourteenth, Scholastic Book Fair will be going on, they do need volunteers for that. Another congratulations to Linden student David Ducassa, I hope I'm saying that right, and teacher Marcela Valderrama. They went and there was a weekend competition, and David won a Braille contest over the weekend. So congratulations. And also congratulations to Malden Play Pro. They were able to go and performed on Saturday at M E T G., which is a theater program. It's kind of hard because it is competitive, so they're not moving on, but they put on the Hope and Heartache Diner. They also are putting that on tomorrow for free at Jenkins at three o'clock. And while they're not moving on, there were, part of the program, they recognize kids who may have done an excellent job in whatever area. There were four different students from Malden who received excellence for acting. Those are Natalie Keating, Matt Jason Chan, Maxwell Torres, and Alexia Maciel Lima. So those were excellence for acting. And I agree with this one, they also got a tech award for excellence in set design, went to Ivan Lynn. So those are fantastic awards, there were eight different, I think it's eight, eight different performances that day. Malden was one of them and did a great job. I encourage you to go check them out. And lastly, on a changing thing, it's more the public sector, I want to congratulate Dawn Macklin, who has been named and selected by the Zonta Club of Malden to be one of our Women Making a Difference. And this is to, she's part of the awardees for the humanitarian award, along with Counselor Amanda Linehan, for their creation of Mary Malden, which they've been doing many years, so I congratulate her. In addition to Ms. Macklin and Ms. Linehan being recognized, we also, the Zonta Club is also recognizing Detective Renee Kelly, Laurie Ardai, Lauren Connolly, who is a teacher at M C., and Michelle Luong, who is a former school committee member. And those will be, there's a ceremony that is done on March twenty-seventh at Spinelli's, but congratulations to my co-school committee member.
All right, very good, thank you. And just from the chair, as Mr. Drummy alluded to, tomorrow we will be delivering our annual State of the City presentation. It will be held at eight o'clock in the morning at Anthony's in Malden on Canal Street. For those that can't attend, it will be recorded and will be shown at live throughout the month of March. And also, as Mr. Drummy alluded to, we try to change it up every year, so our communications director, Elena Savino, wanted me to provide you with this hint. This year's State of the City is all about answering the right way. So that's your hint. We'll see you tomorrow. If not, we'll be showing it through the month of March, and we'd love your feedback. We do have a lot of challenges, but based on what I've seen over the past month leading up to tomorrow, we have a lot to be proud of as well. So with that being said, we'll now entertain a motion to go into executive session. Motion made by Mr. Drummy, seconded by Mr. Bernard. Clerk will call the roll.
Mayor Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Drummy?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Batafor?
Yes.
Ms. Macklin?
Yes.
Ms. Hordy?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Ms. Rose Seiberg?
Recording stopped.
School Committee is now in executive session.
Recording in progress. Recording stopped.